Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Weems, School Board Vice Chair in this special meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach. Virginia is hereby convened at 4:00 PM on this 18th day of February 2025. In accordance with the schedule of school board meetings approved by this school board at their January 14th, 2025 organizational regular meeting and pursuant to Bylaw 146 and Virginia Code 2.2-3707, the school board will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 at 4:00 PM at the School Administration Building, Number 6, 2512, George Mason Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23456, in the school board room. The purpose of this meeting is for, one, presentations on debt service overview, the rising cost of student activities, and Bayside Six transition update; and, two, the FY 2025-26 school board proposed operating budget, and FY 2526 through 2030-31 capital improvement program discussion by the school board and the school administration. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please announce the role.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Present in the school board chamber are Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowman Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers, and present on Zoom is Chair Brown. And Ms. Brown, for the record, can you explain why you were attending via Zoom? Ms. Brown, can you hear us?
I will add, Ms. Brown is attending Zoom from her home. She is sick today. Okay. And as Vice Chair, I will assume the duties of Chair for this meeting. Please note, members of the public will be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vb schools.com, meetings live broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those who have joined us today in person and online. Now, if you would please join me in observing a moment of silence. At this time, please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Colleagues, are there any modifications to today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the agenda as presented.
And Ms. Brown, how do you vote for the adoption of the agenda?
Vote yes.
So, Madam Chair, we have, Madam Vice Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion to pass for the adoption of the agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, our first presentation will be the Budget Workshop Number One, the Debt Service Overview, and Ms. Pate, I believe, will start us, followed by Mr. Freeman. Thank you, Ms. Pate, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, School Board members, Dr. Robertson. This afternoon, we will provide a high-level overview of financing means and debt service for the City Schools Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. This presentation aligns with information previously shared by Mr. Kevin Chatalier, Director of Budget and Management Services during the Joint City Schools Five-Year Forecast Presentation back in November. Before I begin, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Freeman to review the Funding Sources slide he presented at the last meeting. This will provide a refresher and set the stage for the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Pate. And for everyone, I have a slide here, but also it's in your book under the Funding Summary tab. Just open up that one. This is the slide that I'll be talking to. So, before we get into kind of some of the big-picture concepts, I just wanted to be able to walk with you, through with you, some of the items and the line items in this Funding Sources to help set the stage so that as you hear the bigger-picture things, you can kind of come back to, all right, what does this really mean? From a, and we, as much as we can, we try and do comparisons that make it a little bit more tangible. So, I'll come back to the concept of a mortgage here and there to be able to explain what some of these values mean. So, let's start in the blue area with the Funding Sources in the 25-26. And we're going to mostly limit this conversation to one column. There's a lot of nuance here. I'm going to try and keep it as basic as possible, and we can talk about nuance and question and answer. But as you go down the Funding Sources and the names of those, you have bonds, so you've got charter bonds and public facility revenue bonds. Those are essentially, just think of those like bonds. They're bonds that we can issue in order to be able to fund our projects. And then the other one, let's go down and look at the Energy Performance Contract Funding. Those are bonds as well, but the city many years ago asked us to break that out as a line item in that way, so that's why it looks there. But those are essentially another authority to be able to issue bonds in that amount in that year. So, those are the bonds, and that's where we would incur the debt in that amount when we issue those bonds. They're not be, required to be issued in the year that they're given, it's just an authority to be able to issue those bonds. So, those are related to debt. Now, let's talk about cash, what cash goes into these. So, PEGO, that's straight out of the operating budget, and it goes into cash into the capital program. If there's a sale of property, that would show up as cash in the year that we sell the property and receive that cash. State construction grants, we've left that in there, we've only gotten one since 2008, 2009, and that was in 2020, we got about 20 million. We continue to leave that in there in hopes that at some point we will get that, that shows up as cash. We obviously don't have any in there this year. And then the reversion funds down there at the bottom, that 20 million, 500,000, that is also cash, but it doesn't come directly from the operating budget. As you know, we go through a process at the end of the year, if there's money that's available, we request reversion from, from the city, and that's how it gets cycled back in. It's essentially unused money from the previous year that when we go through the reversion process is specifically designated to go back into the capital program. So, what you've heard so far is from, from PEGO, there's $4 million of cash in year one that goes from the operating budget into the capital program. Everything else that we've talked about at this point, we got the reversion funds, and then everything else is our ability to be able to execute bonds. And then up at the top, that's the additional line that we added related to debt service, and we've briefed you many times that we're at $50 million in debt service. All right, so let's swing back to the mortgage example. If you were going to go into a bank and you were going to try and buy a house, you had a mortgage, one of the items is going to be, they're going to determine, well, how much can you afford to pay on a monthly basis? That's debt service, and we do it on an annual basis. So, if you went in there and you said, hey, we can, we can figure out how to pay $2,500 for our mortgage a month, and the bank says, okay, yeah, we agree with that. That's what we're saying with $50 million. We can afford to spend out of our operating budget, out of our annual money, we can afford to spend $50 million just on our mortgage, just on our debt service. So, then they're going to look at, all right, well, how much can you afford? How much house can you afford to buy? That bottom line of 74,760,000, that's essentially for that year, how much we can afford based on that level of debt service. That's ultimately what that means. With the notable exception that when you're talking to that banker, they're going to say, well, how much cash have you already saved up? Well, part of that's going to be the $4 million in PEGO, and then we've got the reversion funds that are going in there as well. So, ultimately, in that year, the bank is saying, okay, about $75 million is what you'll be able to do based on the cash that you have available and the debt that we're willing to issue you. That's how, that's what that row of numbers means. That's our authorization. It doesn't mean that we're going to spend all of that money, because as you notice, when you go onto the Prince of San High School line item, the appropriations to date, we haven't spent much, but that has to build up over time so you have enough money to be able to, to pay for it later. But that's ultimately what those all add up to, and their relationship is, do you have enough debt service to be able to cover the payments for those? That's what that $50 million is? Yes, we have it, and we've briefed you on how that needs to build over time if we're to build a high school-sized project, Prince San High School, as the priority project. So, hopefully that gives you a little bit of background as you go into the debt service discussion here in a minute to be able to, this is the tangible part when we kind of talk about the other connections of big picture related to debt service. And I'll take any questions at the end when she's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, I'm going to start on this slide with some terminology. It's a guide for financing tools used in CIP. You heard Mr. Freeman reference some of these just a few minutes ago. To simplify these concepts, I will relate them as to a household budget scenario involving the replacement of an HVAC system. In the first scenario, your HVAC system goes out in April during tax season. You just so happen to receive your federal tax return, and the amount of your return is the exact amount of the bill for the HVAC replacement. In government, we refer to this as pay-as-you-go or PEGO funds. We take current-year estimated revenue and pay directly for that good or service. You deposit your tax return, you pay the HVAC tech, and the job is completed. The same applies to PEGO funds in the CIP. Now, if you're not fortunate enough to be expecting a tax return to pay for your HVAC replacement, you may instead have a savings account in your household budget where you have set aside funds for a rainy day, and you need to utilize these funds to pay for the HVAC. In the operating budget in CIP, we refer to this as fund balance, or previous retained earnings, or previous year underutilized resources such as reversion to use as a one-time means of financing to pay for that project. If your household budget does not have access to either of these options, you may need to rely on debt such as those as credit cards or a home equity line of credit to fund those repairs. In the CIP and operating budgets, we talk about this scenario as being funded through bonds or debt that is used as an instrument of financing for a capital improvement project. Bonds are basically a long-term means of financing. When we talk about bonds, we are generally discussing two key terms and categories of bonds. Charter bonds, also referred to as general obligation public improvement, or GO bonds, are municipal bonds established through the city charter. The charter dictates how much the city is allowed to authorize and legally appropriate each year as part of their annual operating budget. These bonds are backed and funded with the full faith and credit of the city rather than through user fees or revenues generated from the project itself. The term for these bonds is generally 20 years, and buyers typically view them as being less risky. They are included in the overall city debt metric calculations, which are shared with the school division. Another category you hear discussed are public facility revenue bonds, or PFRBs. These are revenue-backed bonds tied to specific projects with dedicated funding sources. This means that they have an established dedicated bill payer that is contingent on future revenue from those dedicated revenue sources that are subject to annual appropriations. While the school division utilizes both types of bonds as a revenue source for our CIP program, remember, the school division does not issue debt directly. Debt issuance and the related process is managed by the city. The city monitors cash flow and issues bonds when they need to reimburse itself for project expenditures. There are two important terms to be familiar with and understand when we talk about bonds. The first is authorized. So, what does it mean to have an authorized bond? In terms of the operating budget, it means a legally authorized source of funding. Bonds are authorized during the annual budget process to back certain projects. When we say a bond is issued, it means the bond was sold in the market to generate funds similar to taking out a home equity loan, with debt service representing scheduled repayments. This slide illustrates the connection between the operating budget and the CIP. While we talk during the budget development process about the operating budget and CIP being two entirely separate documents that can stand on their own, they are indeed very much related. PEGO funds originate from the operating budget and become an appropriated source of funding for projects in the CIP. Bonds are programmed as part of the long-term funding strategy for various capital projects, such as construction of a new building. The relationship with the operating budget exists when debt service payments are made once bonds are authorized and the CIP are issued. The debt service is what the operating budget must fund each year as part of the annual This slide includes fiscal year 2024-25 budget data for both city and schools to help illustrate the impact of this relationship on the operating budget. Looking at the schools' portions, slightly over $1 billion is budgeted in estimated revenues for the current fiscal year. In terms of the CIP, we have budgeted $3 million to be appropriated to the CIP in the form of PEGO funds. This represents the amount of estimated revenues the schools send directly to the CIP to fund approved capital and maintenance projects. And finally, the $50,71,611 is budgeted this fiscal year and for fiscal year 25-26 for the debt service obligation to repay the bonds issued for projects executed through the CIP. When reviewing the CIP document, you will find charts such as you saw with Mr. Freeman's presentation, that, such as this, that illustrate the bond amounts that are programmed into each year of the plan. In this chart, you will see the amount of general obligation bonds, or charter bonds, as well as PRFB bonds programmed for the city and schools CIP for fiscal year 2024-25 through fiscal year 29 through 30. People often look at this chart as a reflection of annual debt service payment or what the bond issuance will look like each fiscal year, but that is not the case. What the information shows is the value of bonds that are to be appropriated or authorized in any given year to back projects in that fiscal year. The appropriation of bonds is typically the green light for project execution to begin. The city typically does not forward-issue bonds, but instead reimburses themselves. This is not always the case, but historically, this is what has occurred, and the city is in an enviable position compared to other localities with respect to their bond program. To demonstrate the timing of the bond process, we will look at a hypothetical project, Project A. The upper table reflects the CIP, and the bottom table reflects the operating budget. Each of the red boxes represents an action point in time of what takes place and the impact it has on the operating budget. Starting at the top, Project A needs $10 million appropriated in year one of the project. The city or schools then appropriates $10 million for the project, thus establishing appropriation authority for the project manager to begin execution. In this hypothetical project, expenses will be incurred during the first three years of the project for a total of $10 million by the end of year three. The city's finance team monitors the city's cash position and the execution timeline of projects, because these are the driving factors in determining when the city goes to market to issue bonds. In this scenario, three, year three is identified as the right time for the city to sell the bonds associated with Project A. Then in year four, the first debt service payment will be expended against the operating budget, and then again in each year following until the bonds are repaid. This scenario reinforces the dependent relationship between the operating budget and the CIP. You cannot have one without the other. As a reminder, the payment timeline shown in this slide is hypothetical. If the Project A were to expend all $10 million in year one, it would still be a future point in time when the bonds would be sold and the debt service payments would begin following the sale. In terms of monitoring and planning for the bonds used to finance the CIP, any programmed bonds should be assumed to be sold at a future point in time with the impact on the operating budget being in the form of debt service payments. The issuance of the bonds and the debt service payment schedule will be driven by project execution timeline. One of the things that the city and schools must be mindful of is that we share the same debt metrics. It is of no consequence to the rating agencies that we are separate entities with separate budgets. What they are looking at is the overall health of the entity, both city and schools. The rating agencies are looking at the self-imposed debt metrics that are highlighted on this slide. Finally, whenever the bonds are programmed, in the past, the city has always relied on having a sustainable bill payer in place or sustainable means of supporting that debt service payment when bonds are issued as a result of a project being executed in the CIP. This is a consideration that rating agencies are mindful of. Having a sustainable, ongoing bill payer in place for the PFRBs is seen by the rating agencies as very positive means of having a sustainable operating budget. And so, that concludes this presentation, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right, colleagues, any questions on bonds or debt service or financing CIP? All right, Ms. Melnick.
I just want to thank you for putting in this in layman's terms, because a lot of people do listen to the, at least the budget portion of school board meetings, and so to have this explained in its simplest terms, I really appreciate that.
I just, I guess, maybe a question, comment, I guess. Mr. Freeman had brought up state construction grants and said that that was something we got like in '08 and '09, and that's not something that's been brought up again. Is this something that possibly our legislative committee can work with on finding out if we can find more cash for this? I mean, I haven't heard of state construction grants before, so I'm just interested in that.
I guess my answer would be whatever you could find advocacy for to help support our capital program. That would be wonderful.
Great. Thanks for giving me a direction.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I'll share that in the governor's budget, correct me if I'm wrong, I think he earmarked $250 million in construction grants, which we very much appreciate. With 134 school divisions, $250 million doesn't go very far, and as you can see, just from a singular project, what a singular project of this, at the scope of a high school could potentially cost. So, when they're, the General Assembly is determining who receives those funds, there's a number of factors that they consider, and one of those is the local composite index and the locals' ability to pay. And we have a high composite index because we have, we are in a wealthy city, and so we don't seem to make the cut. Now, in the House and Senate versions, there's some additional funding they want to shift into, the construction grants, it's not a, an amount where I think even with those additional funds, we would make the threshold for identification of anything, so. But there are two bills out there that, that I believe may pass, there, because they're combined, and that would allow a locality to execute a sales tax increase that would go strictly to CIP. So, we'll see where that goes.
Dr. Robertson, if I do a brief follow-up, because as I thought about your question, we've talked about this a lot, but we have a new board, so I have to remind myself what information was shared before. So, one of the cruxes of this that is meaningful to understand was the change in the legislation related to what lottery funds were going to do and what they were not. So, back, and this goes into our loss in buying power over time, back in 2008 when we had a financial crisis, that was the point in time that the legislators looked and said, hey, we've got this pot of money over here, and it's pretty high, and they have this other pot of money that's pretty low, how about we just make it all in the same pot? So, it was no longer designated for, lottery funds were no longer designated for school construction, and then there was no accounting for that after. So, and again, roughly 2020, we got $20 million. That's the one year since 2008, 2009, when they changed the legislation about lottery funds. So, that's one we've talked about many times, but I keep forgetting that we have new board members, and we need to layer this stuff some more.
Thanks so much. All right, I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Ms. Pate, Mr. Freeman. Colleagues, if you have questions in the next week or two, shoot them an email, please. All right, so next on our agenda, the rising cost of student activities, Mr. Delaney and Ms. Turnbull, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. As we continue to make these difficult decisions regarding both the operational budget and the capital improvement program, we felt it was necessary or important to provide a brief to all of you on the rising costs of student activities. Just going to give you the bottom line up front. The annual increase in cost to offer the number of VHSL-sponsored athletic and activities programs in our school division is requiring a larger and larger allocation from the operating budget, meaning it's taking funds away from other critical areas that are accounted for in the operating budget. To be clear, we fully understand that participation in student activities is a profound positive impact on the development of our students. However, we offer these very important programs at their own expense. Much like the presentations you've received from Mr. Freeman around the capital improvement program, these expenses have grown greatly over the past several years, and we are having to respond to those rising costs. We feel strongly that adjustments must be made in how we fund the true cost of student activities and athletics. As we enter the budget planning and developmental phase, it's easy, it's essential to consider these financial factors to ensure the continued success of these really important extracurricular programs. Ms. Leanne Turnbull, the Director of Student Leadership, she's going to provide you an overview of these expenses, as well as look at potential opportunities to offset costs. At the conclusion of the presentation, we're going to be looking for direction from the school board regarding the opportunities she shares. So, at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Turnbull.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Good afternoon. My name is Leanne Turnbull, and I'm the Director of the Office of Student Leadership. I'm here with other members of my department who oversee our school's student activities programs, Mr. David Rhodes and Mr. John Cosimo. Today, I'm here to discuss the increasing costs needed to run our student activities programs. I will provide a historical overview of student activities costs, present a recommendation for increasing coaches' salaries, and outline potential avenues to offset these expenses with an overarching goal of increasing revenue to $1 million annually. Virginia Beach City Public Schools is committed to offering a dynamic and enriching extracurricular activities program that fosters student engagement, school spirit, and community connections. For this presentation, when I reference sports and activities, I will be referring to this list of Virginia High School League-sponsored sports and activities at the high school level, and Virginia Beach Middle School League's sports and activities offered at the middle school level. Please note, the activities at both middle and high school include debate, scholastic bowl, speech, which was formerly forensics, and one act plays for theater. In addition to these sports and activities, in the 2025-26 school year, esports will become a new VHSL sport at the high school level. Esports is an electronic sports, is electronic sports, and refers to competitive video gaming where players or teams compete against each other in organized tournaments. and refers to competitive video gaming where players or teams compete against each other in organized tournaments. Our record of state and regional championships is impressive and a testament to the commitment and hard work of our students and coaches. As you can see from the numbers, we have a long history of both teams and individuals advancing to postseason play. We recognize the profound impact these programs have on our students' sense of belonging and personal growth, and we invest heavily to ensure students receive the best possible experience. Maintaining a high-quality and competitive student activities program will require significant financial investment. This slide provides you a historical overview of the student activities budget over several years. While the student activities budget encompasses all extracurricular activities, including athletics, clubs, and class activities, as you will soon see, the Virginia High School League and middle school athletic programs and activities account for the largest portion of operational expenses. A few key points to highlight to help you understand the funding trends you see on this slide. These specific years were selected as comparison points due to the COVID-19 restrictions in 1920 and 2021, which significantly impacted participation in athletics and activities. Thankfully, during the 21-22 school year, participation rates rebounded to pre-pandemic levels. In 2023, you see a slight increase in funding. Recognizing the community's strong interest in expanding athletic opportunities, the school board approved lacrosse as a new Virginia High School League varsity sport in the 2022-23 school year. To help cover startup costs, one-time additional reversion funds were provided, and you, and you can see reflected in the budget. Looking at the 24-25 budget, you can see our projected spending will be slightly more than $6.1 million. Over the past six years, we have increased our budget by approximately $1.1 million in order to fund student athletic programs. To date, we have spent roughly $3.3 million of the projected spending. Expenses for the remainder of the winter season, including playoffs, as well as the entire spring season, are still forthcoming. These financial considerations are critical as we sustain, as we work to sustain and enhance our extracurricular programs while ensuring equitable access and long-term sustainability. As we review our biggest budget costs, you can see our athletic programs are a major component of our middle and high schools. Schools host over 2,800 regular season contests each year. When evaluating the financial investment in our student activities programs, it is essential to understand the key cost drivers within the budget. I will highlight five areas that impact the student activities budget the most. On the slide, the expense categories are listed on the left, and the amount allotted to each category is listed on the right. One of the largest expenses is coaches' salaries. Offering competitive salaries allows our division to attract and retain top-tier coaching talent. Another critical investment is in athletic training and sports medicine. Thanks to our partnership with the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters, our schools benefit from highly-trained staff who provide the best medical support at every practice and every game. Prior to the 22-23 school year, CHKD required high schools to staff two athletic trainers. However, with the addition of lacrosse as a VHSL sport, CHKD requested school staff an additional trainer to meet the increased medical needs across middle and high schools, bringing the total number of trainers to 36. Ensuring the safety and security of our students, staff, and community at events is another significant financial commitment. Through our partnership with the City of Virginia Beach, we work closely to maintain a secure environment on all competitions and athletic events, regardless of the cost. Staffing officials at events is another significant expense in our budget. Officials ensure fair, consistent, and role-based competition, which protects the integrity of the sport, the players, and reinforces sportsmanship behavior. Finally, state-of-the-art equipment is essential for both athlete safety and program excellence. Whenever possible, the Student Activities Office provides funding for high-cost equipment and capital outlay projects that are not covered by the General School Fund. These include expenses for purchases such as gymnastics floors and mats, wrestling mats, uniforms, and some equipment replacement. It is our goal to increase funding to schools in this area each year. However, the increasing costs in other areas have required these funds to be shifted and used to cover additional expenses in other areas. Increases to the Equipment Fund will help us also support the implementation of esports at each high school next school year. While not factored into the funds you see in this budget cost, it is important to share with the addition of this new sport, we anticipate additional yearly costs ranging from $50,000 to $65,000 for all schools to have high-speed internet access required. Funds will also be needed to purchase equipment such as PCs, gaming systems, and accessories required to compete. We must mean, we must remain conscious of future budget costs and to the rising cost to maintain and enhance our athletic and activity programs. This underscores the importance of strategic budgeting and funding solutions to ensure our students continue to have high, access to high-quality, safe, and competitive programs. One of the biggest expenses in our student activities budget is police coverage at events. We deeply value our partnership with law enforcement as their presence provides a sense of security and reassurance for our schools, students, and community. In this slide, the school year is listed on the left side of the chart, followed by the rate of pay for this, for that school year. We have broken this down further to show our average, our yearly average cost and our monthly average cost for that year. It is important to note, in the 23-24 school year, the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office transitioned to an off-duty scheduling program, resulting in increased costs. The department partnered with Off Duty Management, ODM, which utilizes a web-based platform and mobile app to increase efficiency with scheduling off-duty assignments. As stated, implementing this improved system has come with increased costs. In the spring of 23-24, the police pay rate increased from $50 per hour per officer with a three-hour minimum to $66.60 per hour per officer with a three-hour minimum. This increase reflects both a raise in police wages and the administrative fee associated with ODM. In 2021, we were paying $33 per hour. In four years, we have doubled our pay rate. As you can see, just in police security alone, we are anticipating close to $274,000 more than we did in 2023. Additional funds will be needed in the 24-25 budget to cover the difference from the originally allocated amount. Ensuring the continued safety and security of our students, staff, and attendees remains a top priority, and we must strategically plan for these financial adjustments. Like our police coverage, we must have certified trained officials at each of our athletic events and competitions. This slide shows the school year on the left and the pay rate for officials on the right. Costs for officials continues to increase. Since the 2022-23 school year to now, we have seen an increase of costs of approximately $74,000 to pay for officials. We have little room for negotiating the cost of hiring officials, which has also become more challenging over the years. By adding additional revenue, we could potentially be able to help balance these increasing costs without compromising other areas of the budget, like equipment and coaches' salaries. As we review the costs of our student activities programs, it is clear coaches' salaries make up a huge part of the budget. Key points to consider: our budget funds 1,095 coaching positions, 706 at the high school level, and 389 at the middle school level. As a reminder, this includes those who coach speech, scholastic bowl, debate, and theater. Even though our budget demands and costs are growing, we must also consider our coaches' salaries. The last time our coaches received a raise was in 2021. Prior to that, coaches had not received a raise since 2003, 18 years. Coaches play a vital role in developing student athletes both on and off the field, fostering leadership, teamwork, and discipline. As we come up on another five years since the last coaches' salary increase, now is the appropriate time to consider a 10% increase in coaches' salaries. Additionally, we must consider adding postseason play as teams and individuals advance to playoffs. We must respect the time, energy, and commitment our coaches make to our students and programs. A competitive salary structure ensures that we can continue to provide high-level coaching, which directly impacts student success, program quality, and overall school spirit. As you saw on the previous slide, a 10% increase in pay for VHSL and Middle School League coaches is estimated to be roughly $249,000. When you add the postseason play rate of approximately $50,000, the total needed to fund this increase comes to just under $300,000. Investing in our coaches is an investment in our students. To help offset the rising costs of our athletic programs, we must explore additional funding strategies while ensuring continued access to high-quality programs. One option to help generate additional revenue is to increase ticket prices for athletic events. A modest price adjustment can generate additional revenue to help offset operational expenses, including coaching salaries, equipment upgrades, and security costs. Another potential solution is implementing a student fee structure, where student athletes contribute a participation fee to help support their respective programs. This approach, already utilized in many districts, can help bridge funding gaps while maintaining program integrity. It is important to note, should this type of model be implemented, it is essential to ensure that financial assistance options are available so all students, regardless of economic background, can continue to participate in these valuable activities. Let's take a closer look at these offsetting cost ideas. Making slight adjustments to ticket, making slight adjustments to ticket prices is one avenue we have explored to help offset rising student activities costs. Given the increasing financial demands, a modest price increase to tickets and pass prices can provide essential funding while keeping events accessible to families in the community. Let's get a better understanding of ticket sales. In 2020-20, Virginia Beach City Public Schools transitioned to the GoFan online ticketing platform for all athletic events, streamlining the ticket sales process and enhancing efficiency, security, and convenience. This transition eliminated the need for cash handling and manual accounting, reduced errors, improved inventory control and bookkeeping, and allowed for capacity limits and advanced purchasing options, and minimized long lines at, at events. By 22-23, all school, secondary schools had fully adopted the GoFan ticket sales. While this platform improves, improves the ticketing experience, it has also introduced an increased cost of a dollar per ticket. To prevent families and community members from absorbing this additional fee, in 2022, the school board requested the student activities budget cover the fee for each ticket sold, ensuring no direct impact on consumers. Our current ticket prices for secondary athletic events are shown on the slide at the top left, and the approximate, approximate revenue from the increase in ticket costs on the right side. A slight ticket price increase at both the high school and middle school levels could generate a projected revenue increase of close to $356,000 based on last year's ticket sales. Additionally, a 10% increase in pass prices using the 23-24 sales data could yield an estimated revenue of $13,600. By combining these projections from ticket sales and pass prices, pass price adjustments, we estimate a total potential revenue increase of approximately $369,000, which could be used to offset costs. Importantly, these projections assume that Virginia Beach Public Schools will continue to absorb the GoFan ticket fee, ensuring families do not bear the additional costs. Strategic thinking, strategic ticketing adjustments allow us to generate additional revenue to help balance increasing costs for police, officials, and supporting an increase to our coaches' salary. In addition to increasing ticket prices to help offset the rising costs of student activities, we explored a student fee structure, which requires students to contribute a participation fee to help support their schools and respective programs. Many school divisions across the country have implemented similar models to maintain high-quality extracurricular offerings while addressing budget challenges. It is important to note, in order to implement a student fee structure model, school board policy states students may be charged for their participation in school activities or extracurricular activities of a voluntary nature if fees or charges are approved by the school board. The approval of this fee would be done when the general student fees are approved in late April, early May this year. We are considering two potential student fee structures. Let's take a look at the first option. Option A is a secondary general school fee in the amount of $50. This option includes a one-time participation fee of $50 for all students enrolled in middle and high school. This fee would apply to all secondary students, regardless of the activity for which they participate. The total revenue generated on this slide is just over $1 million, and is based on the current number of students enrolled in all middle and high schools, which is a little bit over 33,500 students. The total approximate revenue does take into account our students who qualify for free services, who would not be charged a fee, as well as those qualifying for reduced services, who would pay a $25 fee. We have considered and subtracted these numbers in the estimate provided. Let's take a look at this section, second option we explored. Option B is a secondary school, Virginia High School League, Middle School League, participation fee. This option charges a participation fee only if the student participates, unlike Option A, which is a general fee paid by all secondary students. The secondary school participation fee would be for students participating in high school, Virginia High School League Athletics, and Middle School League activities. In this model, this fee would apply for each sport or activity in which a student participates. They would be charged the fee for each sport or activity throughout the year. For high school, the student fee will be $75 for each VHSL sport or activity, estimated revenue of $522,000 based on the number of students currently participating in sports, roughly 8,400 students. The estimated revenue includes students who qualify for free services and would not be charged, and the estimate considers the discounted fee rate for students qualifying under reduced services. Likewise, for middle school, the athletic fee will be $50 for each Virginia, Virginia Beach Middle School League sport or activity, estimated revenue of $189,000 based on the number of middle school students currently participating in sports. Again, the estimated revenue includes students who qualify for free services, who would not be charged, and the estimate considers the discounted fee rate for students qualifying under reduced services. The total estimated revenue combining fees from both middle school and high school, considering those who qualify for reduced or free services, is slightly over $700,000. To provide a broader perspective, we analyzed the participation fees and associated costs of other divisions and of local travel and club leagues in our area. In review of fees charged by local divisions, high school fees range from $20 to $75. These were generated, gathered from Hampton, Williamsburg, and Pecosin. Organizations such as Beach FC, Virginia Rush, Travel Softball, and AAU Basketball charge fees ranging from $50 to $300 in setup costs to one-time payments as high as $1,700. These fees typically cover expenses such as travel, lodging, tournament entry, and general equipment. Virginia Beach Rec Center programs offer slightly more affordable options with fees ranging from $90 to $150 per season, depending on the sport and level of play. When comparing these costs to the fee structure being proposed for Virginia Beach students, it is clear our recommended fees remain both reasonable and more accessible than many other athletic and extracurricular options in the region. This ensures that students have the opportunity to participate in quality programs at a significantly lower cost than private travel leagues, reinforcing our commitment to providing affordable and exclusive extracurricular opportunities for all students. Affordability and accessibility must remain a top priority, ensuring that no student is excluded from participating in athletics or activities due to financial hardship. In summary, by strategically implementing the proposed revenue streams to support the rising costs of student activities, we can generate additional funding while ensuring that students continue to have access to valuable extracurricular experiences. Combining the increase of ticket sales in Option A would generate a combined revenue just over, a little over $1.4 million, which meets and exceeds the $1 million goal to offset increasing costs and leaves funding for additional expenses in consideration, such as esport implementation. Combining the increase of ticket sales in Option B would give a combined revenue of slightly over $1 million, also meeting the $1 million goal. also meeting the $1 million goal, allowing us to meet current budget needs. As you can see, maintaining these high-quality athletic and activity programs comes with a significant financial commitment. In closing, as budget planning continues, it is crucial to consider the financial needs of our athletic programs to ensure their continued success. This requires thoughtful financial planning and investment and utilizing options available to help offset costs. Throughout this presentation, I have outlined key cost drivers of the budget and the investment required to sustain and grow our programs. To further discuss these details and address any questions you have, I am joined today by David Rhodes, soon to be inducted into the Virginia High School League Hall of Fame, and John Casamano. Both bring extensive experience and insight into student activities, and we welcome any questions that you have.
Madam Vice Chair, I wonder if I might make a statement?
Of course.
So, I appreciate the board's listening to this presentation in consideration. Just want to add one other thing. In current policy 5-69, if you want to familiarize yourself with that, policy 5-69, the board does have authority to levy student fees. In fact, it states that "Students may be charged for their participation in school activities or extracurricular activities of a voluntary nature if fees or charges are approved by the school board." Before recommending a fee or charge for voluntary school activities or extracurricular activities, the school administrator will consider the impact that such fee or charge may have on the inclusivity and equity opportunity for students. And it goes on to say, under 569B, that reasonable fees and charges may be collected for admission to athletic contests, contest student performances that are open to the public and other programs sponsored by the school. So, what we've proposed to you here is three potential revenue streams, although two are similar. All would need to be approved by the board. The board would need to approve a change to the ticket prices. The board would need to approve whether they went with a singular fee for all secondary students or whether they approved of a student fee based upon the seasons that they play. I think Ms. Turnbull made a, really took a number of opportunities to share our position that we do not want any decision made by the board to prevent or preclude a student from being able to participate. Some of the other superintendents I've spoken to that use fees, they have fundraising opportunities that they also do, that when there's kids who can't pay the fee, but they're not free reduced lunch, then there are decisions made within the context of those teams to ensure that fee is provided. And then finally, I'll just say that what we're looking for here from the board is after a discussion, at some point in time during the budget process, a yes or no on a decision around fees. Because if the decision is no, then we know we're going to have to make arrangements in the final adjustments to our budget to incorporate the costs that we saw here. And if the answer is yes, then that allows us to then free up those, that money that we're pulling from other areas to cover things within the activity budget, to use them as they were originally decided. So, thank you.
All right, Dr. Green.
Thank you. I have two quick questions. Thank you, Ms. Turnbull, for that presentation, and congratulations, Mr. Rhodes. My first question, are there any other school divisions in our area that are formally assessing fees as we are proposing, or even in Virginia?
Yes, we gathered some of that information. Would you guys like to come up more specifically about that?
So, if I understand your question, you're asking, are there other local school divisions that are imposing fees?
Yes.
Yes, there are. Hampton School Division, Williamsburg, James City County, and Pecosin all implement, currently implement fees.
Okay, thank you, but no one on this side of the water?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we would be the first if that is the decision?
Correct.
Thank you. And then the second question I have, have we looped in a discussion with our SACS and our secondary principals about, you know, the information that you just shared, how that possibly could impact things? And I guess what first comes to mind, I'm by no means a sports expert, but I do know, for example, a lot of school-age students do participate in AAU travel teams, as well as you mentioned in your presentation, Ms. Turnbull, rec leagues. So, if the fees are not, I don't want to say competitive, maybe comparable, would we possibly run the risk of losing students participating in sports under the Virginia High School League? And for that reason, that's why I ask, have we had this discussion with our secondary, with our SACS, as well as our, and student activity coordinators for the viewing public? They may not know what SACS, who SACS are, as well as what our secondary principals?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Green. This information, this presentation was shared with principals last week during the league meetings. They have not seen the full presentation, and we have not engaged in discussions yet.
What about our student activity coordinators? Because they're instrumental in organizing a lot of our activities under the Virginia High School League in our schools.
They've not been made aware in a formal setting yet.
Are there plans, you think, to loop them in?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Rogers?
Thanks so much. I think I just have more of a comment instead of a question. I think my biggest concern is that our students at the middle school level are basically, I like to say, trying things out. So, they might be trying four or five different sports within a couple of years. And with these fees, are we then going to be squashing students from trying different things and then not having those students then going into the secondary having, "I love this sport, I don't love this sport"? I worry that if we're going to be imposing fees, especially on our middle school students, that they're not gonna really, if they've never tried a sport before, that that's gonna impede them from trying something new. And so then, when we don't have those students trying those things, then when they get to the high school level, they don't have the experience to then try out for a high school team. And then we will actually be shrinking our athletic tree, so to speak, if our students, if we don't have the kids that have already tried the sports. I think when we saw, this is sort of our, some of our fine arts issues with our middle school. Now, we're doing electives because we're finding that some of these programs are shrinking at the high school level, and I don't want to see that happen to our sports. So, I think that's my concern, is that if we're imposing too many fees on our middle school kids, then they're just not gonna try the sports that they maybe would have otherwise tried. And then, when they get to high school, then we don't have as many students to then try out. Does that make sense?
It does, yes.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you for sharing all the information, and I appreciate the thought put into this presentation. I think some of my questions are, I'm trying to digest this, and I'm looking more just for clarity, and so, along with just giving some of my feedback and for members of the public who are joyfully watching us at home. You know, we, as school board members, I hope that you continue to give us feedback on this topic because I know it definitely impacts parents and student involvement. I think my first question is, as I look at Option A, has a one-time fee for every single student, $50. Is that going to, is, you know, when you think of that money in total, is that only going to, was it VHSLA or VHSLA Sports? Activity is defined as those? Is the funds collected by the student activity fee going to be going to things like clubs within the high school? Because I think that'd be a difficult pill to swallow as a parent, that I'm paying $50 for something that, you know, my kid wouldn't participate in. However, if it's going to a broader sense of clubs and all those different things where they have more opportunity to participate, I think that'd be a reasonable ask. So, I guess that's kind of my first question. And I don't know if you just want me to parade down my thoughts or whatever. But, so that's kind of my first question, just thinking about that, is how does that money, is that money just going to our operating budget? Or is it gonna actually go to implementation at the school level?
It would impact our operational budget in the main areas that we discussed, the coaches' salaries, offsetting costs for the police, officials. And it does cover the Virginia High School League and Middle School League activities and sports for middle and high school. So, those activities would be the speech, the debate, and theater.
I'll add, you do bring forth an interesting opportunity, Mr. Cummings. We're really looking for, to try to generate revenue of roughly a million dollars a year. And if we had a solution that generated $1.4 million per year, then that does give us other opportunities to spread out the rest of that money. So, for example, right now, schools do annually put forth requests for equipment replacement or expansion or club supports that, quite frankly, all those answers right now are no. Or you're on the rotation, we'll see in five years. Additional revenues could lead to an adjustment. And certainly, if this is a decision that the board supports, we could provide the board an annual report every year of where these funds went for that very question.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, I mean, that's just my feedback on Option A and some of the feedback that I've had from just talking with a few parents already. I think in terms of looking at vendor ticket prices, and I researched this, and I admit I do not know enough information about this, but $1 charge for a $5 ticket seems high, it's 20%. But I also don't know enough about the vendor market. And so, I don't know if we've done previous analysis of potential ticket vendors or if GoFans watching, if there's a more equitable price that we can get to share with our, that we could keep as an institution. That's something that's on my mind as well, because, oh, the price seems a little high. But I also do not know enough about that market. I did one check where I looked at Eventbrite, and they had similar prices, so I don't know enough about it. But if we've done previous analysis, please send that our way. I think also, as we look at, you know, parent passes and thinking about how parents can pay for those, if we do end up going towards that option, I would ask, do we have monthly payment options towards that greater pass? Partner with something like a firm or something like that, where parents who might not have the upfront cash can make monthly payments? That'd be one ask that I would be considering. I think that's all that was quickly on my mind. I mean, as I'm reading through this, you know, my initial thoughts are, we have a lot of clubs and a lot of activities and a lot of teachers who are going the extra mile. And so, I don't, who are doing co-curricular things for music and arts, who are not part of one of these listed activities. And I think that's a concern I have, that we're not, that maybe I just need more clarification on what qualifies as a student activity and whatnot. But I'm conscientious of the fact that some of those folks are doing similar base work and not getting paid. And so, I'd be curious just to know a little more about that.
Mr. Cummings, we do have, those individuals get supplements. So, we can provide you the list of supplements and what they're paid. So, if you're a club sponsor, you get a supplement. If you're a department chair, you get a supplement. If you're a band director, you get a supplement. So, we'll give you, we'll get the list of supplements and send them to you.
And just to clarify, the budget that I'm referring to is the Student Activities Operational Budget for my office. Each school also has a budget, so they can cover some of the club class activities through that as well. This is the bigger expense of our operational budget that we focused on. And there are going to be several considerations that we'll need to take in to consideration as we think about putting fee structures in to make sure that students have access. And that would include fundraising, like so many clubs and activities currently do.
All right, Ms. Melnick.
So, for those of us that grew up here, Mr. Delaney, he'll probably remember that our parents paid a book rental fee. And, but let's just talk about Option A. To Mr. Cummings' point, does admin anticipate fee collection woes, if you will? Like how, if every student is assessed $50 and those fees are not being paid, how do we collect those fees? Or do we hold, you know, at the end, we hold the report card? Or we do something if somebody hasn't paid all of their fees? Is that gonna happen in this case?
Yes, so we can't hold report card, that's against policy. But you ask a good question, Ms. Melnick. We're obviously trying to operate with our families in good faith. We don't have the ability to go and secure those funds. We would not put a lien on anything to secure those funds. We're trying to help get our families to understand the costs of these activities and that, you know, either we're gonna continue to cover those through our operating budget or we're gonna need their assistance.
Right, but you could imagine a family might say, "You, I put you on the bus in the morning, and then you come, you come home on that bus when the bell rings, and you don't stay after school, you don't do anything at school, or your sports are specifically travel, or there are no sports." So, you can see where a family might say, "I'm not paying $50, you're never at school." And that's, you know, so that's why I lean a little more towards the pay-to-play.
Yes, and I think if I had to do a plus delta, Option B seems to make more sense because you're getting a benefit in being asked to contribute versus Option A, you're not getting a benefit unless you participate.
Right.
That's more of the collegiate model where
Right.
they have you. You selected the school to go, and they have you, so.
Well, we could always go back to book rental fees. Okay, I'm just.
All right, Ms. Dwyer.
You mentioned the other divisions. Can you repeat them and tell me how long that they've had this plan or this?
Yes, we can repeat them. I'm not sure that we can tell you how long they've had that plan unless you have that information. Williamsburg, about 10 years, Hampton, and Pecosin were the other schools.
Okay, those were the three I had, okay. And, I mean, I feel my heart goes out. We have a couple board members that do have students that this would affect. And I think I would love to hear more parental input here. I don't think it should just rest on our vote alone. Like, for me, I don't have any students right now in Virginia Beach City schools. So, I would be, I would encourage any parents out there to give us input, and I would, I would appreciate more their input and their involvement in this vote and not just ours alone.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Sorry, I didn't ask a question I was supposed to ask. So, in this, on Slide 3, you have the sponsored sports, but sideline cheer is not listed, even though it is, both JV and varsity is listed on VHSL. So, is there a reason why it's not included? Or, there's competition cheer in the winter, and that's all that we've listed? So, I didn't know if that was, there's a reason?
Just competition cheer is the only VHSL-sponsored activity there? The rest is sideline?
Yeah, no, I'm saying, we only listed competition cheer, but we didn't put sideline cheer in this presentation.
We listed competitive activities. The Virginia High School League does recognize sideline cheer as an auxiliary group, but we only listed competitive activities for the purpose of this presentation.
Got it, thank you. Dr. Green?
Yes, is your current budget for the fee schedule based on the current number of students on free or reduced lunch?
Yes, that was based on this year's numbers.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because we, as you know, are going through tough economic times. We saw this when we had the pandemic, and we saw a rise in the number of our students on free and reduced lunch. And I suspect we're probably gonna see that with the upcoming school year. And sometimes those things don't happen until midterm, or it's haphazard. So, I would suggest, or I'm sure you will take in, because So I would suggest, or, or I'm sure you will take in consideration, landing on some type of percentage for, you know, possibly the increase of, of families who will need, um, our assistance with free and reduced lunch because that I think would impact the numbers that we saw today, um, as well. And I look forward to hearing what our high secondary principals and, and Saks have to say about the, uh, schedule as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Um, Madam Vice Chair, um, Ms. Brown does have her hand raised.
Okay, great, you, great, thank you. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate this presentation. Um, you mentioned a new offering. Can you remind me what that offering is and what the total cost of adding that offering is?
Yes, I mentioned esports, electronic gaming. And that would cost approximately $50,000 to $65,000 to start up. Um, $50,000 annually with internet fees, um, that's for each school. And then about $16,000 for, uh, equipment costs depending on what the school has or does not have currently.
Are, are we required as a division to start that up? Because historically, when there's been other offerings, we, we voted specifically on those.
I'll let Mr. Rose answer that one.
The Virginia High School League considers esports as an emerging activity. They have, when, whenever there's an emerging activity or emerging sport, there's three years for that sport to really la- lay, uh, lay its foundation. So we're in the last of the three-year emerging process. A number of our schools have participated in esports, um, as an emerging activity. And we're looking at putting together, um, a proposal to offer it as, um, actually, um, a legitimate activity. And the Virginia High School League is gonna offer state championships in esports, um, starting next year.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I'm fine with the ticket cost increase. Uh, last year, our boards discussed pay for play. And, um, you know, at that time, I thought pay for play was not really very palatable and the majority of the boards did not, not think it was palatable either. I do actually believe that assessing a fee to every student for activities that they may not even participate in i- is actually a little bit worse, but I, I do not support either of those initiatives. We get an operating budget that is funded by taxpayer funds already. The taxpayers are already, uh, attending our, our schools with those, um, funds. And therefore, I, I don't think that we should be trying to find additional revenue, uh, to maintain that. Um, and I just wanted to share my position. Sorry if that wasn't very coherent as I'm not feeling well.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
All right, we're gonna jump to Ms. Felton and then I'm gonna ask a few questions and then we'll return to you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, first, let me say thank you for using words like inclusive, connecting school spirit and equity with the proposal that you're bringing forth. And I'm definitely, um, impressed with your including our free and reduced students as well. You brought up the, the, um, concern about fundraising. And we might have a policy on fundraising, but, uh, I guess you can, your, um, understanding is that we're probably, and you're probably to put it in consideration, either tightening up one of our policies or making sure fundraisers, fundraisers are under a structured, uh, position. I do know that the PTA and other partners that we have, community partners coming in, they're already doing things, especially, um, a faith-based, uh, um, community is working hard. And some of the fraternities now are asking, what more can we do? And I was waiting for this particular budget, after the budget to talk with them concerning this. So I'm saying to you, with this going forward fundraiser, you use the word fundraiser to, to make amends for other students. So would you, would you be considering us doing another policy or tightening up a policy when it comes to fundraising? Because if, if not structured, sometimes it can get away from us as to what people want to do as a fundraiser.
Right, so, um, activities and clubs and they do different fundraising things for different purposes. So I think there's gotta be consideration to how would we look at that for supporting students if they had financial strains? So that could be a potential, potentially looking at a policy.
All right, yes, thank you. I've got three questions. Did we go, refresh my memory, did we, um, start using GoFan to save money or was it convenience?
Before, uh, the pandemic, we actually started looking at GoFan. It was kind of, um, the trend, um, in school sports ticket, ticket revenue collections. Then the pandemic really ratcheted up the need for something different than taking paper bills. And, um, so I think it was both of those things. It, it, there is a, a convenience factor. There's also, I think, sometimes an ease that more and more people were using credit cards to pay for things versus cash. More and more people were comfortable with that. But when we got to, uh, COVID, uh, it just seemed like that was the only way to go and we just haven't gone back since then. We felt that it was a better, better situation.
Did that, but now have gone back. And, and when you're talking about $1 for a $2 ticket, I mean, we have $2 tickets trying to go up to $3. All right, for the ticket prices, you know, looking back here on the individual, if you're not gonna buy a family pass, is there a cap? Cause I can see with my children, siblings and two parents and a, throwing a grandparent there, I'd be paying $60 or $70 to watch a baseball game.
We have not discussed a cap. It's not part of this presentation.
Okay, okay. And then also, um, with this, w- when you list all the sports, what, what, where is that listed? All the activities, can you turn to, oh, you don't have that up there. Okay, yes, slide three. Which ones on this page do we not charge a ticket? Whi- which, which sports do you get in free?
You're testing my memory here.
I know, and I think, I think I know, but.
Sure.
Exactly, yeah.
So we don't charge for golf, we don't charge for cross-country. We don't charge for, we just implemented charging for volleyball. Uh, we don't charge for indoor track. We don't charge for swim and dive. We don't charge for baseball and softball or outdoor track. And those decis- and tennis, those decisions are mainly based on the fact that we don't have the infrastructure to charge. We don't have a common entrance at all of our schools. Tennis match, for instance, you can come right up to the fence and watch. There's no way to control it to collect those, those fees. So we do charge for indoor activities where we can control the entrance and those activities that are basically held in a stadium where we have, uh, an entranceway.
There is a, okay. That's interesting. I always wondered, you know, why we didn't charge for baseball. Did you, did you always run to that, Ms. Melnick? I always wonder because I think, I mean, I'm gonna get a bunch of emails from baseball parents. But, um, in, interesting that there's so many that we don't charge. So I, I would, I would hope that we would take a look at that somehow. But I, I mean, thank you for explaining it. I do get it. And same with tennis. That's kind of interesting too, how there's a lot that we don't charge for. So we could probably recoup some money by being fair and charging all parents, you know, instead of, oh, your parents played this sport, so you get to save a couple hundred dollars from watching them. So that's kind of interesting. All right, um, thank you. Ms. Rogers?
Sorry, um, so we're not currently charging for esports, correct?
Correct.
Okay, cause I just wanted to comment that my kid did actually play esports at Salem. And it is a sport that they can now get scholarships for at the college level. So I think it's important just to realize that kids actually can get scholarships to do esports nowadays.
I knew I should have written it down, hold on. Oh, do all of the surrounding divisions score sports? Because I know that eighth graders in Chesapeake can play JV.
Yeah, the vast majority do at different levels. Uh, we have the most robust. Um, some have just started on the peninsula and have asked us for guidance on how to grow their program. Some are adding in Hampton, they're adding sports and other divisions are adding sports, but we certainly have the, the most of anyone in the area.
Okay. Yeah. I know we've ta- we've talked about this before and I don't wanna say it out loud because I, you know, we, I mean, we have athletes and so that's all I know, you know, is, is sports from a very young age. And so I can't imagine it not being there. But I know in tougher budgetary times, we've talked about the elimination of middle school sports. Because there's a transportation piece involved with that too. I'm not saying that. I don't want anyone to think I'm, I'm advocating for that. It's just, we spend a lot of money. And so you were gonna say, Dr. Robertson?
Yeah, so I was gonna say, I appreciate the conversations and just a couple of things that were not included in this presentation, but these are realities. Our principals are having a more difficult time year after year trying to get their coaches in the building. And those coaches in the building are teachers for the primary part or security or t- or something like that. We are getting more and more volunteers that, uh, are, are coming in to coach. And there's a, even though we have good volunteers, there's always a liability for someone whose primary job is not in the school system. So, um, as we, we look at coaches' salaries, I think it's critically important this board supports the re- coaches' raise at 10% no matter what we decide to do. Within this framework of options we provided you. Example to Ms. Weems' question. Well, we don't charge for all sports. Should we charge for all sports? But Mr. Rose's answer indicates it would be really problematic to charge for some of those outdoor sports because you don't have a singular entrance. However, there isn't, there is a pathway there where we. Let's not, um, generate ticket costs off the backs of parents whose kids play football, basketball, wrestling, uh, gymnastics, those things that are indoors versus if we did a student fee, but not ticket prices. And we only did a student fee for those students who participate and not an increase to ticket prices. We could still generate, uh, close to $700,000, which is not a million, but it goes a long way to covering the cost of our coaches' increase in salaries, the increase that we've recently had with officials and police. And if nothing else, it plugs a gap until we can then assess what were the results of that decision.
So looking back historically, I'm looking at you again, Mr. Delaney. Did, did we also, did our parents also pay a student activities fee going back to the seventies and the eighties? I know we had the book rental fee, but.
I'm the old man in the room.
You were in the late seventies. Yes, you were.
I'm not familiar with our parents ever paying an activity fee in the history of the school division.
Okay, and I would like to echo that. I definitely, definitely do support paying our coaches more because I just talked with a coach not too long ago. Young teacher, young coach, first year coaching, loved it, did great, but basically said, I cannot do it again. It was so exhausting. It was hours and hours and hours of that part where you condition and then you have regular practice and then you mentor these players and then you have postseason. And this coach is thinking about not doing it because if, if you divide it up, it's like, you know, three and a half dollars an hour. I mean, it is, it, yeah, it is, and as a former collegiate coach and coaching all different levels, it is a lot of hard work. So I definitely, um, agree with this raise for the, for the coaches. It's an interesting conversation. I hope that we hear from the public. It's a lot to go over, but, um, I think that hopefully we'll, um, send y'all some questions this week and hear from the public and, and try to somehow make it happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dwyer had another question. I'm so sorry.
No, I just wanted to echo, um, that there, everybody brought up a lot of good points. But as I'm sitting here thinking, I think it's just so much easier just to raise the ticket prices and forget all this other stuff. And then we'd have enough to pay our coaches extra. That seems to make the most sense. But again, it's important to have parental input.
Thank you, Ms. Dwyer.
All right, we have one more. Mr. Cummings?
Well, my question is just, when are we vote, when are we voting on this?
So, good question. So, um, I will talk to the Chair and Vice Chair because it will require, um, this to come back to information and then action. And so I'll talk to the Chair and Vice Chair about what the best time for that is.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Bayside Six transition update. We've got Ms. Ingram. I think will start us off. For Dr. Smith, both of you? Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the Board and Dr. Robertson. Um, we want to thank you for the opportunity to provide, uh, the board an update to the Bayside Six student transition from the old Aragona Building on Jericho Road or Sixth Grade Campus to Bayside Middle School Building on Newtown Road. And, um, excuse me, you may notice in your handouts that slide one and two were switched for, uh, flow purposes. But, um, the Department of School Division Services is doing all things necessary to accommodate all three grade levels at Bayside Middle School for the start of the school year in August 2025. Many of these activities, we do all the time for all schools in order to get ready for the new school year. Many of you also, uh, recall the number of moves that our teams have successfully completed in the past, including most recently, uh, between this very administration building and Holland Road Annex. So in terms of Bayside Middle School, there are no big modifications needed to the school to conduct this transition. The move will be conducted by our Distribution Services Team, a very talented team, uh, with the bulk of work being done in summer months when students and staff are out of the building. Our transportation team will have revised routes ready for the start of the school year as well. We will continue to coordinate with various offices through move meetings prior to summer in addition to continuing walkthroughs and soft moves to ensure all needed move-related factors get addressed. On the next slide in front of you, uh, is a floor plan of Bayside Middle School on Newtown Road with uses of the building highlighted for the upcoming school year. As we briefed you in our planning phases, all three grade levels will fit along with support needs for all three grade levels, including special education and career and technical education considerations. I will now turn it over to Dr. Jim Smith in the Department of School Leadership, who will be able to share other planned components to ensure a successful transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Jim Smith, Senior Executive Director of Middle Schools. And this evening, I will share the fun events planned for transitioning our Bayside families, staffing updates and how we intend to communicate this information to our stakeholders. As I share this information, please note that we have two grade levels or two cohorts that will be transitioning to the, uh, Bayside Middle School campus. We have our rising sixth grade students who are current fifth grade students and our rising seventh grade students who currently are our sixth grade students who are housed on the Bayside Sixth Grade Campus. In collaboration with Dr. Chambers, Principal of Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, and in collaboration with Ms. Bevell, Principal of Bayside Middle School, a series of events are planned for our students and parents to learn about the wonderful opportunities that await them next school year. The first transition event will be this spring. Spring visits will take place March 6th through March 27th. Students will be greeted in the auditorium by a leadership team followed by a Q and A session for students. Student ambassadors will provide a tour of the school building during the school day so students can experience what the middle school day looks and feels like. The second opportunity will be the summer transition program, which is perhaps the most exciting for our students. This program provides students the opportunity to prepare for first week of school by giving them the opportunities to follow their full schedule, meet their teachers. meet their teachers, tour the building, participate in practice on how to set up their lockers, which is a big thing for middle school students, a rite of passage, if you will, learn tips for success, and participate in fun activities and enjoy lunch with their peers. In August, the school will host a meet and greet for parents and students. This event is designed for parents and students to meet the leadership team once again and to learn about the many resources Bayside Middle School provides. Parents and students will also learn about their classes, school activities, club opportunities, and tour the school to meet staff. In the fall, Bayside Middle School will host an open house to energize and officially welcome our students and their parents to the middle school. The administrative team and key staff will provide an overview of important information such as school hours, student and parent resources, safety protocols and procedures, special events and activities, and how to follow the newly approved middle school master schedule. Students and parents will follow an abbreviated schedule and visit each classroom. Teachers will provide parents with an overview of what students will learn, contact information, and classroom expectations. In collaboration with our face office and for communities in our school's program, we have two fun and exciting events that are planned for our parents and students to bring them together. The first event will take place March third. That will be a skating party that will bring students and parents together to provide the opportunity to meet each other in a fun and social setting. The second event, which will happen in July, will be our Family Cookout. It will take place with families to enjoy lots of good food and fun activities as they embark on a new adventure to Bayside Middle School. This slide highlights multiple meetings held to address staffing. A core team, including Human Resources, Budget and Finance, and myself collaborated with various departments to assess consolidation and staffing needs. These discussions prepared key, provided key highlights, allowing us to analyze both, both locations, identify our overlapping positions, and to evaluate staffing requirements. Our next steps include ongoing meetings with the principals to provide priority staffing updates and explore support strategies for our staff members. Departmental meetings will continue as, as we need to further collaborate regarding staffing needs. Identifying priority staff will receive, identified priority staff will receive personalized letters outlining their status and key information for future reference. Staff from the Department of Human Resources will join building principals in a one-on-one meeting with identified priority transfers to explain the process and address any questions that they might have. Lastly, the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, DCC-E, is an important part of the Bayside Middle School consolidation plan. DC, DCC-E will keep the community updated through Parent Square, Alert Now messages to feeder schools, alert and short story pitches to local media, social media posts and links on various platforms and updates on VBschools.com. The Family and Community Engagement Team is working with the administration to support the upcoming events tied to the transition such as our skating party and family picnic. As you can see, there is much planned to welcome our new students and families to Bayside Middle School. The leadership team and staff are excited and continue to plan for these events as we work closely together to ensure a successful transition. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll just comment first, Dr. Smith. I'm, I'm so excited for these students and, um, I was just talking with my granddaughter just yesterday. She's in seventh grade and she said, you know, seventh graders are just stuck in the middle. Sixth graders, it's so fun. You're new. Like you said, you get to decorate your locker. Eighth graders, you're the top of the food chain. But these seventh graders have a great opportunity to be in a new building, go to all the events and, and all the fun stuff that you're talking about and a lot of new opportunities. And so every single grade level in this building has something exciting to look forward to. Um, and we, of course, would not forget the new, um, newly voted on super schedule with the flex time and all that stuff that everybody has, but each grade level is gonna have some exciting stuff to look forward to, so I'm, I'm grateful for that. All right, we have a lot of questions up here. Dr. Green.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Smith and team, thank you so much. Um, I'm very excited about all the, um, activity that will be happening for transitioning our students. Um, the visits that are for March sixth through the twenty seventh, are those just for students? Or can parents, are there gonna be times for parents or this is just for our day students?
Yeah, it's, it's just for students because they'll be coming in while school is in session and each feeder school will have one day. And so it's an opportunity for just the students to first go to the auditorium. They'll get a little bit of information, be able to ask some questions. And then while school's in session, they'll be touring the school and be able to go into a few classrooms, uh, just to get a feel or a sense of what the middle school day looks like.
Thank you. And then another second question, with all these wonderful activities and knowing how busy families can be, how soon, and I know this is part of your office working with, uh, family engagement, how soon can we get a calendar with dates so that we can blast it out throughout, uh, our communities? Uh, so that families can put these very important dates, we can share it at churches, Williams Farm Rec Center, a lot of other, uh, places in, in the community so that parents, in addition to, I know the communication that, uh, you and your team will be doing with parents directly through the parent portal and Alert Now, et cetera. But I think it would be great if we could get a nice visual, uh, with all these dates, uh, sooner than later so that we can continue, uh, to keep the communication going. So thank you for the development of all these activities.
Absolutely. We, we can get those dates. Uh, I do know the Bayside's finalizing the picnic date. There's the little bit of prep that goes into that. Uh, and then most likely the open house date. The, the ones toward the end are the ones that we'll finalize, but yes, we can do that for you.
Ms. Rogers.
Um, just two quick questions. I just want to make sure everyone can fit in no trailers?
No trailers.
Excellent, because again, portables, trailers. I just want to make sure that we're, everyone fits and we're not putting portables on the campus. Again, we have several schools with portables. I would prefer to not add any more. The other question I have is about that family picnic. Um, I know you said that they're trying to schedule for July, but most of our educators are ten-month employees and then therefore would not be working, so would that be something that we're compensating them for or how does that work?
We haven't discussed those details.
Okay, just double checking. I know that some of our other schools, if they're gonna do something like that, we'll do it like right before, the, the, as the teachers are in session, but the kids are not, so that we're, you know, making sure that our teachers are compensated for the time that they're given.
Yeah, I would, I would offer that, um, traditionally doesn't make it right, but traditionally, uh, particularly ninth grade teachers participate in a ninth grade transition program which occurs prior to the day they come back. So you look for other ways to provide accommodations to teachers who do those things, but there's no funding source to compensate them, but there are other ways that you could try to do something, but, um, yeah.
Ms. Felton.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, just wanted to say, I had the opportunity to go to the last merger meeting at Bayside Sixth Campus. It was wonderful, very informative, and the staff there were really happy, glad that we were going over. This question might be redundant. I just want to know since I'm coming on the back end of it. But, um, how do we transition the staff, custodians, food product, the people? How do we transition? Did they, did they go, all go over or were some of them placed in other places as well?
So, we, as identified in the presentation, we do have some stu-, or some staff that'll be priority transfer. A very small number of staff members and that is something that our Human Resources, uh, members will be meeting with the principal and the individual to walk them through that process. So we do have a very small number.
Okay.
Estimate, I don't know if you want me to give an estimate, but five classified, one instructional. Some of that'll change, uh, depending on vacancies that make, might come up. Um, yeah, and then there'll be a time, obviously, for staff to, you know, when we move, and that's part of those move meetings. When we move, we'll have staff at sixth grade. We'll give them a process of procedures for packing up. We'll have a timeline for things that'll move over and of course, we'll give them time to set up the rooms as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Melnick.
So I'm really excited for these kids and I just want to say to my colleagues, if you have not had the chance to walk the halls of Bayside Middle School with Ms. Bevel, please put that on your to-do list. Um, I don't, it is such an impressive, she's so impressive. She's, you can really feel the love in the building. How about that? I mean, you can really feel it. She knows every kid's name and, and they love her. And she tells them that and they say it back. And so put it on your to-do list. It's really magnificent. Um, and I'm excited and I'm really excited after our, um, public hearing that we had at, at Bayside, really for those teachers that were transit, you know, had to transition back and forth every single day. But specifically the teen living teacher that talked about having to pack up and set up a couple of times a day, like raise the roof. I'm so excited for that community. So thank you for all your hard work.
I don't see any other questions, but great work. Looking forward to visiting.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll continue with, um, discussion on the proposed operating budget and capital improvement budget. And Ms. Page, I think, has some questions that some of our colleagues emailed in with some answers and, and then any other discussion or questions. Thank you, Ms. Page.
So again, good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, School Board members and Dr. Robertson. Um, this presentation will focus on questions we received from School Board members since the C E O presentation last week. Um, I hope you will indulge me. I'm gonna prob- probably read much of this information verbatim, mainly for the viewing public and just to make sure the responses. You have a copy of the slide presentation as well. So what, the first question we responded to was how does the budget directly impact students? As I read through each line, it is difficult to understand at times, but it could be helpful when looking at lines like summer school, al- alternative school, remedial school, et cetera. So K through twelve budgets have a direct and significant impact on students' education, experiences, and outcomes. How funds are allocated affects everything from classroom resources to teacher quality, extracurricular opportunities, and support services. So when the, we tried to break this down into areas. So in the areas of academic programs and curriculum, we have core instruction where funding affects the quality of textbooks, instructional materials, and technology used in the classrooms. For remedial and special education, um, budget cuts can limit the availability of intervention programs for struggling students affecting academic progress. For advanced placement and gifted programs, there's more funding in the, these areas allows for a broader selection of advanced coursework while budget constraints can lead to course cancellations. In the area of class sizes and teacher quality, the first bullet is teacher salaries and retention. You've heard a lot about this. Um, in this budget development season, competitive salaries attract and retain, retain highly qualified teachers, leading to better instruction. In class size, more funding means smaller class sizes, allowing for more personalized attention and better student engagement. Professional development, a well-funded budget ensures teachers receive training on the latest educational practices and technology. In the area of student support services, counseling and mental health services, adequate funding in this area ensures students have access to guidance counselors, social workers, and mental health professionals. Special education services, funding impacts the ability to provide individual education plans, I E Ps, and specialized staff for students with disabilities. In tutoring and academic intervention, more resources means struggling students get additional support to meet grade level expectations. In the area of extracurricular activities and enrichment, we have sports and arts programs. Budget cuts reduce access to music, theater, and athletics. STEM and career readiness, programs like welding, robotics, certifications, and career technical education, or CTE, require funding for equipment and materials. Under school facilities and the learning environment, building maintenance and safety, proper funding ensures safe, clean, and modern school buildings. Technology access, budget constraints can limit students' access to computers, tablets, and internet connectivity. And transportation, lack of funding for buses can affect attendance rates and limit students' ability to participate in after-school programs. In the area of summer school and alternative education, remedial programs, funding determines the availability of summer school programs for students who need to catch up. Alternative education, schools with higher budgets can affect alternative education for students who need non-traditional learning environments. In college and career prep, budget limitations can reduce access to dual enrollment programs, career counseling, and internships. So the final thoughts with this question was a well-funded K through twelve division ensures better academic outcomes, student well-being, and long-term success. When resources are cut, students often experience fewer learning opportunities, reduced support services, and a decline in overall educational quality. The next question, um, was about Green Run Collegiate. The expenditures increased thirty-three percent from three point seven million in twenty twenty-two to five million in twenty twenty-six. So the main reason for the increase in Green Run Collegiate expenditures is related to compensation increases each year. Um, in the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget, there's also the significant increase in the employer contribution for health insurance that we've spoken to you about. There was also asked what the total student enrollments were for, uh, Green Run Collegiate during this period. As you can see on the screen, this is a September thirtieth count. Uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, there's four hundred, twenty-three, there's three seventy-two, twenty-four is three seventy-nine, twenty-five is three ninety-one, and the projected for twenty-six is three seventy-three. Question regard, um, related to per pupil expenditures only rose sixteen point five percent in the same timeframe. Kind of, um, comparing that to the increase in the Green Run Collegiate expenditures. Um, so this is a statement of fact and the significant increase from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three and subsequent years is due to the infusion of federal pandemic relief grants which have expired. And in addition, the overall budget has increased year over year as well. So the pure pupil calculation, expenditure is a calculation that, um, brings in those components. And so with those pandemic funds, that chart causes that increase. And as those expire, those will come out, but we also have had the increase due to compensation and of course, in all the other expenditures related to inflation. Um, and we just did want to point out that an increase in a small budget category such as Green Run Collegiate may seem large, but the grant, Green Run Collegiate makes up about only point four percent of the combined total budget. So it's really difficult to make those comparisons. So the next question was, as a new Board member, it would be helpful to have more narrative explanations for budget items with significant year-over-year variances. A threshold of fifty thousand to a hundred thousand may be reasonable for requiring explanations outside of where there are obviously notable increases, i.e. building materials. So the budget line item detail was provided. It was posted on our website. It was also provided to school members this morning in Excel format so that it can be sorted as you would like. Um, we did a quick analysis of variances, just over five hundred thousand dollars. And the result with this was that these variances, and this by cost center, so these variances were mainly due to the increase in compensation and employer health insurance contributions. But we also wanted to note in twenty-five, twenty-six, there were new cost centers created. So you may see an academy classroom, which is the cost center eighty-one fifteen, and academy support eighty-one sixty-two. These funds were allocated to these new cost centers from what gifted classroom, cost center, and a gifted ed support. So there was just a shift. We wanted to be able to pull those academy out, um, separate from the gifted classroom and gifted ed support. So there was just a shift, we wanted to be able to pull those academy out separate from the gifted classroom and gifted ed support. In the cost center of eighty-one thirty-seven for social workers, which also reflects and the variance increase in contractual services related to McKenney Vento, transportation for students of a four hundred thousand dollars. That is a huge budget line item for the division to transport homeless children where they need to be. Cost center eighty-three oh four for vehicle operations also reflects in the variant seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to restore some of the bus replacement costs and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an increase in fuel. In cost center eighty-four oh four, facilities and maintenance services reflects a one point four million for an increase in utilities and a million dollars for repair and maintenance. And the technology category also reflects increases for technology contracts and computer software. All right, so this is gonna be interesting, so just bear with me. So the question was, can we see proposed budgets with different salary options? For options like A, B, and C, that and then for non-instructors or what we call unified scale for options A and B. So those options were presented when a human resources presented the compensation information to the board a few weeks ago. So what we've done is we've taken the top part of the balancing section that was presented to you in C EON. We've kind of condensed it so we can try to show you as we change those compensation dollar amounts for those options, what that bottom line is gonna look like. What we did, we're still starting with the ba- the total additional revenue of the thirty million, one twenty-one, five thirty-seven. We left in there the employer health insurance contribution increase of eight million, because that has to be funded. The next is instructional compensation for option A. So that's gonna be on your teacher pay scale. Option A is adjusting the entry level pay by five percent and provides a step, which is one and a half on the teacher pay scale for all eligible employees. That's a cost of twenty-six point seven million dollars. For the unified compensation option A, that's an increasing the entry level pay by one and a half percent. It increases the salary structure step increments from one percent to one and a half percent for years zero through fourteen and maintains the one and a half percent stack step increments for steps fifteen and above. And that's a cost of twenty million, six, twenty point seven million dollars. The next line that says combined prior budget requests presented in C EON. So what we did to reduce the size of this slide is take everything else that was listed on that those slides and give you a total, so that ties back to that original presentation that we did. So you'll see that amount on every slide that we're gonna show you, these options. And we also left the vacancy allocation that we talked about that we were using to balance the original C EON of eleven point seven million. So with those option A for instructional and unified, we would be at a deficit of twenty-one point four million dollars. On this next slide, everything else remains the same except the instructional compensation and the unified. We left instructional at option A, which is on the first slide, at twenty-six point seven million. Unified, we're showing option B, and that's increasing the entry level pay by three percent and which is what, and then maintains step for years zero to fourteen at one percent and maintains step increments at one and a half percent for steps fifteen and above. That gives us a deficit of eleven point five million dollars. This next slide shows you on the teacher pay scale or instructional compensation option B, which adjusts the entry level pay by four percent and provides a step of one and a half for all eligible employees at a cost of twenty-two point five million. And then the unified compensation is option A, which increases the entry level pay by the one and a half percent, increases the step increments from one to one and a half for zero to fourteen, and maintains separate increments at one and a half for steps fifteen and above. And that's twenty point seven, and that leaves us with a deficit of seventeen point three million dollars. This next slide shows instructional compensation and unified both at option B. So option B on the teacher pay scale was the adjusting the entry level by four percent, maintaining the one and a half step increments on that scale. And then option B for unified increases the pay level again by three percent. One percent is maintained for zero through fourteen, and then for steps fifteen and above, it's at one and a half. This next slide shows instructional compensation for option C. That was adjusting the entry level pay by three percent and providing a one and a half percent step for all eligible employees. And then again, the unified compensation option A, which is we've gone, which is the one and a half percent increase at the entry level, one percent to one and a half for zero to fourteen, and the step increments at one and a half for fifteen and above. And you'll see for option C for instructional, it's eighteen point four million. And then unified, it is twenty point seven million, and we are at a deficit of thirteen million, thirteen point two million with that option. I think this is the last one, this is the last one, I promise. And this last slide relating to compensation, we're showing option C for instructional. And that is, again, entry level pay at three percent, one and a half between steps, eighteen point four million dollars. And for option B for unified, three percent for the entry level pay, one percent at zero to fourteen, and one and a half for steps fifteen and above. And that leaves us a deficit of three point two million dollars. This next question is if budget reductions are needed to cover increases, where would these cuts come from? Certainly, that would require some discussion among administrations, similar to what we did when we had to make cuts last year for the city's cuts in the real estate tax rate. And the administration would then present that to school board and look for direction and feedback on the those as well. So this question's on page twenty-four of the C EON, it states allocation of vacancy funds due to unfilled instructional and unified staff positions at eleven million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. How many of positions does this figure represent and which unified staff positions are included? With the school board received an email from Dr. Robertson on the morning of February seventeenth. The next question was, last year, the board approved a purport, proposed reduction in four P B I S coaches totaling roughly four hundred thousand dollars. How many P B I S coaches remain in the division and what is the expense for those? Three positions were eliminated due to this, due to this decision. We have one locally funded P B I S specialist who is supporting all schools now. The staff members support schools with the delivery of professional learning, in-classroom coaching, and monitoring academic attendance and discipline data to support the attainment of school goals in alignment with V D O E's emphasis on a multi-tiered system of support, or M T S S. And it's a systematic, data-driven approach that allows divisions and schools to provide targeted, evidence-based interventions to meet the needs of their students. The total cost of this P B I S coach is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars, and that would be salary and benefits. So what is the total amount of money expended on P B I S specific initiatives outside of compensation and fringe benefits? We do not have local funds allocated to P B I S initiatives. The P B I S specialist supports the schools by providing what I just mentioned before. And they partner with administrators to review goals, monitor progress, and allocate resources. The division provides no additional funds to support P B I S initiatives. The next question is, how much money is allocated to Panorama Education? Currently, V B C P S allocates sixty-eight thousand dollars locally for Panorama Education, with an additional thirty-eight to forty thousand provided through all-in funding, providing schools with real-time accessible S C L data to inform interventions. The next question is, how much money is allocated to other surveys to capture data related to S C L? Inclusive of any cost of programs or surveys utilized to collect or analyze this data, there are no additional funds allocated, so there's zero. Next question is, are there any positions related to the surveying of students or analyzing the data output for S C L surveys, Panorama? If so, what are they and what is the cost? There are no positions that are solely responsible for surveying students or analyzing the data output for S C L surveys, Panorama. The next question is, what is the long-term impact of pre-K on reading development and behavioral issues? Do we see higher reading rates and lower behavioral issues when doing comparative analysis to populations who did not enroll in pre-K? And the person, the question said, my thought process on this is I read through the budget and seeing funds increase for behavioral issues, I wonder if there are cost-effective ways that reduce behavioral issues early on that we utilize and can fund better. Response is that V B C P S's pre-K program is currently on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five program evaluation schedule that was approved by the school board in September for an evaluation readiness report. During the evaluation readiness process this year, we are working with the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability to plan the evaluation questions that will be examined and the design of the evaluation to be best able to determine the effects of the pre-K program. P I, which is Planning, Innovation, and Accountability, will incorporate the questions into the evaluation plan along with a planned match group study of similar groups of students who participated in pre-K versus those who did not. The pre-K evaluation will be conducted during the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The next question is, can we conduct an A B study comparing similar groups of students who participated in pre-K versus those who did not? The response is that Department of Teaching and Learning regularly reviews data points of the students for whom we serve. We can certainly continue to review and analyze data as needed. As noted prior, the pre-K program is currently on the evaluation schedule for this upcoming school year. Such information can be considered to gather as part of the evaluation. The next question is for each cohort, seventeen, eighteen, et cetera, how many of the total students are still enrolled in V B C P S? The pre-K office is working with P I to see what information we can gather for the number of students who attended our V B C P S pre-K program and are still enrolled in V B C P S. Once collected and organized, it will be shared. The next in, uh, question is, the question around, excuse me, around debt service, is continuing to increase debt service operationally sustainable? So our quick answer is yes. However, stated during the Q and A at the last presentation, this will be evaluated each year to determine if conditions and priorities permit the planned increase we would need. And I do not have a question inside, because this was generated really quick today. Oh. Oh, I didn't realize, okay, so I'm gonna read from the screen. So this next question is, I, there was a, I read a news article, the division will be hosting community meetings for Princeton High School. The response is the report was inaccurate, the reporter did not connect with staff prior to publishing, and we don't know why this misinformation was included. Question was, what is the purpose of these community meetings? It seems to me that the process is being done backwards with the budget challenges we are experiencing. And the response is there are no plan for meetings. And that concludes that presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions, additional questions.
So I thank you, Ms. Pate. And I really actually liked the way that you did the proposed budgets with all the salary options. That was very helpful for me to see it all together in this. All right, we'll go with questions, and we have Ms. Rogers.
Hi, always with questions. First, I wanted to really quickly, if you don't mind, just a statement about pre-K. U V A has done a ton of studies on early childhood education, and it's actually who the state uses with regard to like what they're modeling, um, a lot of their early childhood education initiatives on. So if you have questions about pre-K, definitely check out U V A and the V D O E, they do have a ton of stuff, especially in the Virginia Equality Birth to Five website, just saying that. Okay, so for my questions for you, um, can we perhaps, because I know you mentioned that part of our issue is our health benefits increase. Is there any way we can get a presentation from Consolidated Benefits so that we can maybe ask them some questions? I feel like that that's an area that we haven't heard from yet, and that would be great. I have my own brain, Mrs. Melnick.
So certainly, we can do that. We are, it, you know, budget's tight, but we can do that. We will probably would want to have the third-party consultants on there as well, at least virtually. But we would probably want to see like exactly what you want. I mean, we can do the financial impact, we get updated on that regularly, so they could present that to you to kind of show you what they look at and and how they come up with their figures.
That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, that that's really what I'm interested in, like what I, like, I have no idea how.
It's complicated.
Yeah, so it would be good just to hear the presentation. Then the other, um, I don't know if you, I don't know if anybody has the answer to this question, but I'm, there's, just gonna ask it. So over the weekend, I know that the federal government made a statement to states regarding D E I programs requiring to be cut. I don't know if we have any idea what that entails, if it would affect our budget, like anything like that. Do we have any, uh, any direction from the state yet?
I'm not aware of any direction from the state.
There's no direction from the state.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Ms. Melnick.
I just, I appreciate this so much, and, um, but if anybody has questions moving forward, it would be so helpful if you like, could put everybody in them, because this was very helpful to me. And I would have loved to have seen this, you know, as they came in, and then you guys respond. Do you respond right away, or do you wait to do this?
So the the process is, we ask for those questions by Friday, we receive many of them by Friday. We worked pretty diligently on them on Friday and over the weekend. And the presentation was put together, well, of course, some of us worked yesterday, and then the presentation was put together today, and God love Regina.
She published it really late.
So Ms. Melnick asked a really good question, so just so everyone's time timeframe. I don't believe we received any questions last week until Friday.
Correct.
Which is fine, because the fact of the matter is, you had no time to process from Tuesday night.
Right.
Plus, some of you work. So I think the understanding there is when we send our budget, our our agenda pack out on Thursday, you're gonna see a blank area that says board questions, and there'll be nothing listed, because at that point, we may not have any questions yet, and we certainly haven't had a chance to answer. The approach that we've taken to Ms. Melnick's point is, if there are questions that we think we can answer that are better answered offline, like the one I answered related to the eleven point seven million dollars, we'll do that. Otherwise, what we're trying to do is collect all the information and do it in one swoop where you see it all at the same time versus, hey, did I see that email? Where was that email? I don't know how your email works, the stuff stacks on me all the time, David. Not that it's your fault, but it's not, so. So that's the approach we've taken, and Ms. Pate and her entire team recognize that budget season, they are virtually working every day.
Yeah.
It's just the way it is, the nature of their role, much like during summertime, Mr. Freeman's teams and D D toll, they work all the time, because that's just the nature of the business, so that's the way.
And I wasn't, I was talking more about questions from my colleagues than really answers. But I will say, the, um, the response that you gave us about the allocation of vacancy funds was incredible and very helpful for us when talking about that in the community, because people do ask. And I just, I really appreciate, again, I said this at the beginning of the meeting, but just, you know, bringing it down a notch so that, so that we all can really understand. Yeah, and this one was specific cause and effect, right, like, yeah, thank you.
All right, so what I'm hearing is, um, it would be great if we could get our questions in before Friday at five. And, you know, we're gonna have a few snow days, I think, so, um, we'll be able to have a lot of time to process and to write in those those questions, hopefully. Also, we did, I have a request from Ms. Rogers about the benefits. I I know that's, like you said, Ms. Pate, it's very tight budget season, but can I just see a knot of heads? Do we have the majority of us wanting some sort of, um, whatever you can figure out, part of our workshop to cover that? Do I have a knot of heads? The benefits, the whole, the cost of benefits and healthcare and all that stuff? Okay, so that seems like it's, it's pretty unanimous, so that would be great.
Maybe even if you don't, if you don't, maybe even including when an R F P goes out, like, how many people reply to that, if it's even called an R F P in that world, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I think, um, I believe the R F P is getting put together now.
Okay.
At least for the health insurance, but I'm sure.
Historically.
Yeah, I can get Linda to get that information.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so any more discussion or questions? If not, this meeting is now adjourned.
Ms. Swims, do you want to just take an opportunity to explain, the public hasn't heard, what the status is of schools tomorrow?
Okay.
With the superintendent.
Okay, Dr. Robertson, I'm going to leave it on to you because I've got so many emails, but.
Okay, so tomorrow, we will, schools will be closed. We've messaged principals, staff, and families, and I sent those messages to the board. It'll be an asynchronous learning day. All assignments should be loaded by eight AM in the morning. Teachers will offer office hours from nine to nine forty-five and twelve to twelve forty-five for any students who need assistance with those assignments. Twelve-month, or so, non-twelve-month employees may report to their work site, or they may work from home, depending on their family needs. All twelve-month employees will report to work on their normal schedule, and we will close the buildings no later than one o'clock. One o'clock seems to be the threshold when the heaviest snow starts. So it could be twelve o'clock, but it'll be no later than one o'clock where those will close. We have a meeting at twelve o'clock with the team to assess what we want to do Thursday to make those decisions. We can make some assumptions of what we're going to be looking like on Thursday, but what we've announced thus far is just what we're doing tomorrow. And food services, yes, food services are serving tomorrow from ten to twelve in thirteen sites, much like we did before, which is a requirement for the remote day to be counted towards the one hundred and eighty-day requirement. Is, is, yes, yeah, we're, we're, we're going to try to send them home with multiple meals, that's correct.
All right, thank you for, yeah, clarifying that, very helpful. Thank you, Ms. Lynetti. Also, we had scheduled a PRC meeting. We couldn't meet last week because of a conflict of one of our members, so we reset the meeting for tomorrow, and we've had to cancel that because it was to be after this building closed. So we will reschedule for next Tuesday at two o'clock for PRC.
And thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, I know, those are awesome, thank you. All right, with that, I would ask my colleagues to enjoy the snow and go out and build a snowman and send me pictures. Let's have a contest, who has the best snowman tomorrow.
I'll send you my neighbor's.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned at six twelve.